Good evening and welcome to our town hall meeting tonight. Just to let you know that the recording of this meeting will be available on our website later tonight. So for those folks who missed it, or for those of you who would like to watch it over again. Our guests are representatives from two wonderful local organizations, Putnam Clubhouse and We Care. Providing programs that support people living with mental illness and therapy for developmentally delayed infants and preschoolers. Sandy Gritzer, a member of our outreach committee, will introduce our speakers now and then we can get started. Listen to their stories and what they have to share with us. Sandy?
Okay, first we have Putnam Clubhouse, which affords people living with mental illness, the opportunity to recover meaningful and productive lives through reintegration with the workplace and the community. And we have Sandy Young and John Coombs joining us.
Thank you so much. We're really excited to be here to talk to you about our program. We have a slide deck that takes about 20 minutes. So John and I are going to race through that and then hopefully we'll have time for questions after We Care presents. Um, let's see if share screen is going to cooperate with me. How's that? Can we see my screen? Okay. Let's see. All right, John's actually gonna get us started. We're just kind of splitting our slide deck in half here.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So we are from the Putnam Clubhouse. Purpose Open Recovery is a big part of what we do. This, this is our logo that was developed, that was designed by a member of the clubhouse. Okay, so this is our vision. Every person with a mental illness lives a meaningful and productive life. This is our mission statement. Putnam Clubhouse is a place where adults in Contra Costa County recovering from mental illness can experience community support and opportunity. Members enhance their social and vocational skills resulting in self-confident, meaningful and productive lives. We are a place of purpose, hope and recovery. So what is Putnam Clubhouse? We are a social vocational rehabilitation program for adults recovering from mental illness. All programming focuses on the strengths, talents, abilities and skills of the participants called members. Yeah, so we don't focus so much on our illnesses. We instead focus on our strengths, talents and abilities. Membership is voluntary, lifelong and free. Work order day. Members work with a small group of staff from nine AM to five PM. The members are really integral to the running of the clubhouse. They do everything that's involved when doing so. And some of the work we do is data entry, meal preparation, housekeeping, maintenance, program planning, policymaking and member reach out. So we have as a kind of a counterpart to our work or the work we do, we also have social programming. And so we have a variety of things that we do. This is a picture of some members on a fishing outing. You see a member holding a fish that they caught. So social programming decreases isolation, fosters a sense of belonging. And we have all kinds of things that we do. We go out to movies. We have game nights on Zoom, music appreciation on Zoom. We no longer do the book club, but we have outings too, like the fishing outing. We've gone to parks to do like a photo scavenger hunt before. So the list goes on. So virtual programming, we pivoted quickly when shelter in place order took effect in March 2020. And we developed a whole bunch of new programs along with keeping some of our older programs. So some of the programs we added were American Sign Language, ASL, Spanish with Lily, meditation, which we actually did before the shelter in place. COVID updates with Randy. Randy is a former nurse that leads, leads these meetings. Making doing a pandemic is run by a woman who's used to be a psychiatrist. She's retired. And it's basically a support group and then structure with Sandy is another support group run by Sandy who is here tonight and just a general support group having to do with just creating structure in your life. Zoom allows more members to access programming. So yeah, we definitely appreciate Zoom. It's really done some amazing things for our program. SAW, so SAW School and Work Report Support. So we, well, big thing, what we do is help members that want to go back to school or go to work. So one way we do that is help members if they want to write or working on a resume, do an online job search, prepare for a job interview. And then we also have, and then we also have our transitional supported and independent employment, which are basically just kind of different supportive levels to help members transition back into the workforce. And then finally, we have school scholarships. So we, members can apply for these scholarships and get money to pay for books, tuition, whatever, having to do with school. And then we also do tutoring, tutoring, and we help members with homework. So Grow, Get Right on Wellness is our wellness program. So we focus on emotional and physical wellness of our members. So we do everything from meditation to Wellness Watchers to Zumba. This is a picture of one of our members stretching at Toto Santos Plaza in Concord, where we have our fitness in the park every week. And we usually do a little bit of exercise, stretching, maybe some Zumba. Wellness Watchers is a program for members that want to watch their weight along with keeping well. So we deliver, basically we deliver food and recipes for the members to prepare and they meet once a week on Grow. So that's it.
Okay, some more programs. As you can see, we like our acronyms. We have home housing options made easier. This program is all about supporting people who have housing insecurity, which is becoming more and more of a problem every single day. One way that we help our members is through landlord advocacy, trying to problem solve, trying to avoid eviction, trying to figure out how we can maybe extend somebody's residency somewhere. We also are generous with deposits and just financial support for rent. Maybe you're in between jobs. You can't make this month's payment by, but you're starting a new job. You'll be okay next month. We want to support you. We don't want you to lose your housing over that. Having first and last month's rent to get into a new place is a very big challenge for people. So we support with that as well. And then we offer resources and independent living skills because once, you know, somebody has found housing, we want to stabilize that situation and help them maintain that housing. We have a transportation program that we're really proud of because, you know, getting around the community around the Bay Area is challenging. And certainly even just attending our programming can be rough for people who don't have steady transportation. So we have our STAR program, which for $1 round trip, a member receives a ride to or from anything from medical appointments to school, a job interview, grocery shopping, any kind of essential errand, like getting to the bank, picking up prescriptions. What's really beautiful about our transportation program is we actually employ Putnam Clubhouse members. So there's a full circle effect there. And actually on the far end there, Paula. How do I describe Paula? She's on my right, but I always get confused with Zoom. Paula's on the end there. She is a member. She's also a board member and she leads our STAR program. She is one of the primary drivers. And an example of what she might do for someone that is life-changing is we have a member who recently had shoulder surgery. She has a car, but she can't drive it because she's recovering. She lives all the way in Brentwood, but Kaiser has her doing her physical therapy in Walnut Creek. And there was no way she was going to be able to lift there, you know, or take an Uber. The cost would have been outrageous for her. So she utilizes our STAR program and she's able to get to physical therapy. We have another program called Tabs Technology and Barrier Support. This became even more important during COVID. So we are able to provide cell phones with a year's service as well as laptops for our members who need that type of technology for school and work. Here's a picture of Jose holding a laptop. He was in the middle of attending a community college course called Spirit, where upon completion, he was going to become a certified peer support specialist. But right in the middle of it all, COVID happened. And so the class became virtual. And he would not have been able to finish the class, which he did finish. He did a great job. He wouldn't have been able to finish the class without this laptop. So we're really excited about being able to offer that technology as well as lessons on using technology, navigating all the virtual stuff that's going on, everything from visiting with your doctor virtually, right? To of course, you know, finishing your schoolwork online. I love this picture. It's probably, I think, the essence of, you know, Putnam Clubhouse. So clubhouse members are able to have lunch for, for hardly anything, for $2. And the meals are prepared 100% by our hospitality unit members. When, you know, COVID hit, it became clear right away that, you know, these lunches weren't going to be able to be served. Putnam immediately responded by creating a pantry and making sure that members who were quarantining as well as, you know, others who just, the idea of taking a bus, you know, like old times during COVID times to travel to four different stores just to find toilet paper, you know, that, that's overwhelming for anyone. But imagine having depression or anxiety or, or being paranoid about germs. You know, we wanted to make sure that people had essentials. So we were delivering to members homes, food, prepared meals, toiletry items, arts and crafts, just all kinds of things to help people get through these difficult times. And from there, the Putnam pantry developed into even more. We are open every major holiday because we know that things like, you know, Christmas and Thanksgiving, those can be lonely times for people. So we, when it's not COVID, we're open and people, members come. There's food, there's celebrations, there's dancing, there's music, there's activities. We were able to maintain a virtual version of this. And here you see a whole bunch of meals. I don't remember exactly which holiday this was, but these are holiday meals, you know, being prepared to be delivered. This past Easter, we did nearly 300 meals and then we eat virtually. It's a really nice way to still come together as a community. It's not the same, but it's helpful. John mentioned the, the Wellness Watchers program. Putnam Pantry is also responsible for that. They're the ones putting together the recipes, making sure people, you know, know how to count their points and then delivering everything so people can maintain a healthy lifestyle. We also provide resources for folks who maybe are having difficulty budgeting. Maybe they're running out of food towards the end of the month. So we're teaching them, you know, how to shop more wisely, how to stretch their dollar. We, we share with people where to find a food pantry. And then for those who need it, we are able to supplement their food as well. We are really proud of our young adults program. You know, we recognize that young folks, they, you know, they like to talk about their young folks stuff. Um, so this, this picture actually ironically was taken a little bit before the shutdown. They went to one of those trampoline places, which you will never find me at unless I'm, you know, watching my kids at a birthday party or something. But these young people, they could just bounce and bounce. But we make sure that there's programming available for, you know, people to relate to each other. They, they schedule outings together. They're getting ready to go paintballing. They're, they're kind of their own unique community, right? We also have unique programming for our older adults. They are called lovingly our Healthy Silvers. And then also our LGBTQIA+ individuals. We have family support as part of our programming. Again, thanks to Zoom, we're able to provide a virtual meeting for family members to come and share and vent and, you know, talk about resources, ask questions. We offer different kinds of workshops. Coming up in June, we have an attorney coming to teach us about special needs trusts. That's always a big topic, just, you know, planning for the future, that kind of thing. We also have a dedicated part of our website that's for family members. They can read up on, you know, understanding psychiatric hospital systems, the different levels of care that are available. There's different links to other agencies and, you know, just ideas for books to read and ways to get support for themselves as well as for their loved ones. So we, we hope that the criteria for becoming a member is nice and easy. Really, you need to be an adult. You need to be a Contra Costa County resident at time of application. So as John mentioned, membership is lifelong. So if you move out of the county, you move out of the state. We've had members move out of the country. They are still members of the Putnam Clubhouse. And thankfully now with Zoom, they can even still participate. But at time of application, they do need to be residing in Contra Costa. There is a form for a clinician to fill out that confirms one of five diagnoses. Those are major depression, PTSD, schizophrenia, schizoaffective disorder and bipolar disorder. We also ask that people be safe towards themselves and others. If somebody has, you know, had a difficult time being safe in the past, we understand it's not, it's, you know, it's not a deal breaker. What we need is for people to be able to be part of our daily community and be able to, you know, kind of manage what's going on for them. So certainly anybody that, you know, has been hospitalized for being unsafe towards themselves or others, we welcome them if they are able to manage that kind of behavior in present time. And really the only other criteria is that they're interested in participating in what we do, that, that we are a work order day. We do really strongly encourage people to engage in what we're doing. That being said, we have new members who come and they're not feeling 100% comfortable yet. They want to spend, you know, a lot of time sitting out in our garden, enjoying the fresh air and then they pop in for lunch. That's fine. So we do encourage people, you know, if you know anybody that's interested in becoming a member, if they're just even showing a little bit of ambivalence, just send them our way. We'll do the rest. I think most people, they, they come and they feel welcomed. They find a place for themselves there and they, they don't leave. If anybody's interested in becoming a member, all they have to do is call us or check out our website. The membership forms are there online and they can be filled out online. That includes the piece from the clinician. And that, that's all we have. Who's 7:20 on the nose?
That was awesome. Thank you, Sandy.
Do you want to do Q and A now?
I think we were going to do it at the end, Kristoff.
Do that end? Okay.
Right, right. We're introducing We Care Services, which offers therapy, education and parenting help for developmentally delayed infants and preschoolers. And with us this evening, we have Pete Caldwell, who's the executive director, and Erica Williamson, who is a director of community engagement. So welcome.
Yeah, and we are more than happy if you want to do the Q and A with Sandy now, if that's more useful while.
We can do it at the end.
Okay, all right. Super excited to be here. And again, I'm a big fan of Sandy's and Putnam is such a great organization. Like a lot of people in the field, I'm a therapist and come from a background. My father had schizophrenia. So that was a big part of why I got into this world in the first place. And while we did not have access to an organization like Putnam Clubhouse at the time, particularly families that have fewer resources and additional struggles. I'm just really, really grateful that they exist and I'm grateful to St. Perpetua that they support that. And also grateful you support us as well. I do not have a slide deck, so. Sandy, if you don't want folks to do this, it's, it's no problem. But if folks want to ask questions in the time and make this more of a dialogue, we are happy to do that. Sometimes there may be things that slip by or there would be useful to clarify at the time. So, and Erica is here and will let me know because I'm working off a fairly small screen. If, if there's a question that I should be getting to. And again, as Sandy had mentioned, I'm Pete Caldwell, executive director, and Erica Williamson is our director of community engagement. Very lucky to have her working with us and we've, I've been with the agency a very long time and Erica has been what feels like not long at all, but a couple of years now, so that counts. So again, thank you for the invitation. We, your congregation has done a remarkable job with supporting us. And I don't know, if you, if you turn on the TV at any time, you notice how awful things are. And I'd just like to take a moment to recognize that everybody on this call is actually on the side of doing good things. And so it's important that we're not watching TV right now and actually talking about good things that are happening. Because people who care about good things happening are on this call and they are working just as hard as the bad things, I believe. It just doesn't sell as much ads to talk about the wonderful things, but it's important to take a little time out to recognize that everybody here is working hard to take care of this community and to improve things. So I'm just glad to be here and grateful for that. And, and again, particularly folks less fortunate than ourselves. And we'll talk a little bit about shortly, sort of how we get to the place of being less fortunate than, than other folks as well. But wanted to tell you a little bit about us. I recognize some faces from about a year and a half ago when Erica came by and, and sat in a smaller room with a bunch of folks on the committee, the funding committee. And so again, it's great to be back here. We just turned 60. We had a massive event planned for the middle of the pandemic. Not knowing it was the middle of the pandemic until it was a little late. And so when we were talking about how it's been a really difficult year, and then I realized we share a property line with the Concord Naval Weapons Station. And so we were, we were next to the Concord Naval Weapons Stations during the Cuban Missile Crisis. So I guess it's actually, it could have been a little rougher for me than this last month. I don't even know how they managed it at that time. But if you've, if you've ever read some of the stuff that's come out, the Naval Weapons Station was pretty high on the Soviet list of things to bomb. So it's a good reminder that stuff that's difficult now is in context. So we were started by a group of parents 60 years ago. It was a, parents that had children with developmental disabilities. And they went to the trouble of setting up in a church, a set of classes for their children. And the idea was that this was going to be something the school district was going to take on. And then the school district decided not to fund them because their kids had cognitive disabilities in addition to the physical disabilities. And so they were sort of left on their own. And the question was, who's going to care for these kids? And that's how We Care got its name. We focus now on mental health and developmental services for children under five. And I think one thing that's always interesting about this conversation, it's not intuitive to folks about a three-year-old with mental health issues. I don't think that's something we generally imagine. And it's not a kid on a couch. But what we are working with is the fact that this is when the brain develops. So what we invest all of our energy in is early intervention. So we sort of top out. If you're a six-year-old, you're just way too old for us to work with. We put all of our energy in helping kids at the time when we have the greatest impact on them. So why does early intervention matter? It's for a couple of reasons. Some of them are obvious. And some of them are frankly are ideas that are a little hard to hold on to. That have evolved just in the time I've been doing the work, our understanding of how the brain works has changed pretty dramatically. But the first reason we work with early intervention is not particularly controversial. And that's because it's the time to have an impact, right? The brain is doing nothing but figuring out how the environment works for that first five years. It is, its entire purpose is to figure out what the world is like. And then to develop itself around its understanding of what the world is like. So a baby is born with just about the same amount of neurons as a 60-year-old. You know, it's about 86 billion. The difference is there's only about 25% of the connections that they're going to be when they're older. So you get about, and this is part of how it's about 25% of the volume it's going to be. So children, when they're born, have about 50 trillion neural connections. And by the time a kid is 25, they have 500 trillion connections. So this is, this is part of the thing that's not as intuitive is, is that sense of, we don't tend to feel of ourselves that are, that we're created by a set of processes, but that is what's happening. So that's why early invention is critical because as the brain is developing these connections, that's when what that learning piece is, is what is the world really like? And they don't have any way of being objective about that. So all of those things like, is the world a good place? Are people to be trusted? If someone rejects you, is that a huge big deal? Is that something you can be cope? How resilient can you be? It's because the brain is developing these connections and the ones that don't get used, get what they call pruned away. So that's how somebody becomes shaped. And the ones that do get used then become much more solidified into the way the person ends up thinking and feeling about the world. And so just living in that first five years, there's nothing they can do except learn how to do it. And if the environment is one where learning is a good thing and that they get good lessons about that and they have healthy relationships, then they're going to end up in a much different place from a mental health standpoint than if those situations aren't met. And this is the part that becomes less intuitive is we tend to, once we're an adult, we're sort of hardwired to be pretty judgmental about why the people are the way that they are. But if you look at it from a purely a brain function standpoint, we're all just crafted by this process. And honestly, it's kind of luck who you get. If I handed each of you a baby right now, the odds are very, very good, you would know what to do. Whether or not you've had a baby or whether or not you were a mother or a father, you would probably hold it in a way and make eye contact and connect with it in a way that shows that something happened to you, that someone did that for you. One of the things we do, We Care is we deal with mothers who are 16, who've never been held that way when they were a child. And now they have a child and there is nothing in their brain that tells them what to do with that child. So we're talking about really fundamental needs for people to become human beings. And that's what We Care does with that early intervention piece. That's the, the main key. And the other thing is it can't wait. By the time you're five, and this is the part that's a little less intuitive. And most of us feel like we have a lot of agency over our choices and what our lives are like. And we feel that the things that have happened to us are a result of our hard work or other things like that. But the reality is you were pretty much set by the time you were five years old in a lot of really important ways, in the ways that may not be, you know, you have new beliefs that you didn't have before. But whether the world's a good place is an important part of what happened to you before you were five. Whether you trust people, whether you feel you're a good person, all of these things, which then shape everything else that's going on in your life, were already set by the time you were five years old. So that's why it's really critical to get in there before kids are older and do have some sort of impact in a way that, that provides, and, and you know, we, we deal with 20 generations of domestic violence or 20 generations of physical abuse of children. And.
Say Pete. Second, we have a question.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Thanks.
Yeah, no, Pete, how, how do you manage to identify the, the babies that need this health? Help us explain.
Sure, sure. Thank you. Well, a couple of things. One is we're very connected, obviously, just like Sandy and her group are with, with other agencies. So we have, we have home health nurses, right? So every, every, every new mother, depending on her level of resources, gets a visit from a home health nurse just to make sure, does this person know how to handle a baby? And so right there, you know, we'll get a call and say, we have a, we have a 16-year-old mother or a 30-year-old mother who doesn't know what to do. Right? It's not intuitive to her the way it would be to anyone else here. And so that's obviously a place and, and the truth, and, and we do try to work with infants as much as we can. And in our contract with the county that pays for the salary piece, actually allows us to see a 19-year-old as the child client. When in fact, we're working on helping her parent in a different way. So that's the stuff that's sort of secondhand, right? But really importantly, by the time they're three, stuff starts happening. You know, if that first three years has not gone well, by the time they enter preschool or by the time, you know, the aunts and the uncles are sort of noticing this stuff, you, you start getting some symptoms that are pretty dramatic. And, and part of what makes this hard too, is it is also not intuitive to understand what to do when a child is misbehaving at three. A child who is really aggressive at three years old, the temptation for a lot of people is, it's something that should be punished. And the problem is we know now from a biological standpoint, what's going on in that kid's brain is that they're super anxious, which is why they're trying to take control of what they can take control of, right? Because they're worried, they don't know what's going on. And they may have parents that clearly don't know how to help them figure out what's going on. And so, you know, you'll have somebody punishing a three-year-old because they're anxious, but it just shows up as running around or breaking. Because they're anxious, but it just shows up as running around or breaking things or screaming or becoming a problem. And then that child, guess what happens when an anxious kid gets punished? And lots of times physically, gets physically punished for doing the only thing they can think of to do. You know, you, you have a parent who's not sophisticated. They tend to think of a three-year-old as having all these sort of ideas and plans. We've, we've had, we've had parents of eighteen months old who, who sincerely thought that their child was doing these things specifically to bug them. You know, and, and that may seem silly to you, but it feels real to them. Because when they were, when they were eighteen months, that was how they were treated. Again, we're, we're dealing with cycles here. And so, you know, we deal with child abuse all the time. And it's very easy to see the bad guy and the good guy in child abuse, right? Except how long does it take before you, before you can figure out that that twenty-five-year-old who's abusing their child wasn't abused three-year-old? Right? That is exactly what happens. And that three-year-old that you're looking at who's being abused, you have all the empathy in the world for. Without some sort of intervention, they will be abusing somebody. So we have to take a more holistic view of, of all of this, which is sort of remove. Some of the blame piece and really understand there's a biological underpinning on all of this that needs to be addressed that we get to.
Pete, we have another question.
Great, thanks.
From Sue.
Sue?
Um, Sue Williams.
There are you so.
Uh, doesn't it still provide P T O T speech therapy and high-risk families? Or do you still need diagnosis in the mental health category?
No, we do that. What, here's, here's the weird part of how this year has gone. Is that we had. The P T, we have a P T and O T, and we, we still doing that piece, but we had started to shut it down in order to reopen a new program geared toward autism. And that program had, we had to shut down one regional center program to start the other. And we did that in January and February, right before the pandemic. And so if we had, if we'd just been like two months off, then we could have kept the, had the autism program going. And done remote work, but because it had not started yet, we actually had, we were just stuck. So during the pandemic, we've been doing almost entirely mental health work, although we have a preschool. That is developmentally enhanced and mental health enhanced. And frankly, when people want a presentation, we tend to go for the mental health stuff because it, it, it's a little bit more vivid. But yeah, we, we started as a developmental services agency and, and while that's a different type of impact, that will always be part of what we do. And we are very much looking forward to when we can gather again, hopefully soon. And, and build back up our developmental program. That's, that's always going to be who we are. It's the heart of what we are. So. And, and part of what this is. Again, I, I don't want to belabor the brain piece, but. It's really important to recognize that's why we sort of focus timing wise on that. Both in terms of recognizing. This is the time that you can make a difference. And I used to work in a probation department in Sacramento County, sort of managing a relationship between mental health and probation, which is a really. Comp, interesting combination of humans who sort of choose those different paths. And what we recognize is virtually every kid there, if, if they'd gotten different sort of experiences before they were age five, probably would not be there. Right? You know, the kids that are acting out, the kids that were truant. We, we know that early intervention, every buck you spend on early intervention ends up being saving you about four to seven bucks in terms of community costs later on. Adjudication, uh, social services, problems with education, special education. So it's incredible investment time. And so again, that's the, the main reason that we focus. And, and why does any of this matter? It's because you can actually do something. It's not, it's not coming in. And trying to improve a couple of behaviors, you can actually change how families have been raising kids forever and ever. And so we have a pretty wide array of programs. And I'll just list those pretty quickly. We do the therapy that was sort of the basis that I'm talking about. And again, that's generational. Because we will be working with whatever the mom or the dad is struggling with in terms of being a parent at the same time. Again, we don't, we don't. We need diagnoses in order to do the contract piece, and it's really useful to get accurate information, but we're not, we're not stuck with the idea that the child at three is the problem. Right? But there's a way we have to sort of enter this conversation. And so we do parent-child therapy. We do it in the home where it's available to people, and we do it in a way that allows. The family to show us how things really are going there. We have K D A, and I don't know if you're familiar with this, but there was a child in foster care. And like a lot of things in mental health. Good change happens from a lawsuit. And so this child was in like twenty different placements. They sort of lost track of why, where this child was. So the biological parents sued. And now what has to happen in California, which is a good thing. Is that any child who's high risk in foster care needs to have somebody paying attention to it and get services. So. We're dealing with three-year-olds who are in foster care. So you can imagine if a child's in foster care at three years old, things have gone south somewhere. And so we work very carefully with those families. We do a type of wraparound. Which is where we're bringing everybody together to talk about what the needs are of the family, because it's not just the child, right? There's, there's lots of things keeping the parents from being able to focus or, or even just the foster parents at this play. So it's a, it's a more holistic approach. And, and we have a regular wraparound that's not related to foster care. We do a preschool consultation, which is one of the programs I'm particularly passionate about. Which is, we have, you know, if you're four years old, you can get kicked out of preschool, you can get expelled. It's three, it's much easier than if you're five years old, because then other things come into play, right? But for a three-year-old. If they get kicked out of preschool, they're about ten times more likely to have other types of educational problems as they get older. So. We go into preschools and do consultation with parents and teachers to prevent the expulsion. We've got that new autism program that I talked about, it's coming in. Our preschool again has mental health and developmental sort of enriched activities. So it's not a regular preschool. And then we're doing a kindergarten readiness because something really awful happened this last year. And there's, there's an entire, it's weird to call four-year-olds a generation. But it really matters that you're ready for kindergarten. And a lot of four-year-olds didn't get that this year. So I, I think we're going to be seeing. Sandy and I are going to be seeing years down the road, those, that entire sort of age group that did not get the right start in school. And we're going to see a lot more problems with folks adjusting to being in the educational system. So by my account, that's twenty minutes. But I am happy to continue or clarify or, or hang. Whatever you would like. Sandy, what should we do?
Well, I got another question.
Thanks.
I, I'm curious, Pete, what's the percentage in your organization of paid staff versus volunteers? Versus medical staff, you know, people who are M Ds and.
Yeah, we, we have no M Ds.
What, what's the makeup?
Well, so, so volunteers, we have a volunteer board of directors, obviously, and we have a few folks that work in the classroom. The problem is, these are really highly. Highly specialized positions. We're talking about occupational therapists. We're talking about licensed therapists. So we have lots of people that are licensed. None of them are, are medical doctors. But M F T O T, speech, licensed clinical, social workers. And then we have family partners because it's, it's, we have learned now that that's a really good way to. Deliver services where peers, you know, folks who've had kids in the system or something are helped in some way. And, and, you know. The mental health profession has a long, ugly history, frankly, and particularly with communities of color and communities. That are marginalized in other ways. And so having peer support. To sort of translate for and to, to be able to. Have somebody on your side, even within the agency, to help you figure out how to get the services that you need. So as a proportion volunteers, again, the board, just as a proportion of how many people we have is significant because we've got, you know, twelve board members. But we don't have a lot of volunteers in the staff. When, when Gala comes around, Erica hauls in a whole bunch of volunteers to work on that, but sort of the face-to-face with kids. The needs are, are higher than it makes sense to work mostly volunteer. Thank you.
And we can open it up to questions for any, for both agencies, for both Putnam and we care. So.
Sandy, I want to know how you come up with all the acronyms.
You know what? Members come up with those acronyms.
Oh, that's good.
Well, I have a question for Pete.
Sure, man.
I come from a family that has had bipolar, I have a bipolar sister and a depressed brother. And. I understand that a lot of this could be hereditary, like it's serotonin, norephrine mismatch. And. I read the, a Quiet Mind by this professor at Georgetown, and she totally. She's bipolar, and I was trying to understand my sister. So at a young age. I mean, do you go back into the family history? Do you? Can you tell if a child is schizophrenic, bipolar, or depressed? Before they're four years old? And what can be done for that child, if anything?
Yeah, some diagnoses and Sandy can actually answer this as well as I on, on a couple of these topics. But, but as far as the early childhood piece. I, I would, if, if, if I were better organized and could organize twenty minutes more cleanly, I would have spoken a little bit more about how biology sort of impacts these. And yeah, and as the child of a schizophrenic, trust me, I spent a lot of years kind of waiting and worrying and kind of having a list for myself in case it happened. You're not going to find schizophrenia at, at four years old. You're, you're not going to find bipolar, you know, that, but basically by definition. You in get, in order to get any of those sort of under eighteen, you have to be. Dealing with some very specific, and again, Sandy can speak better to sort of adult onset than I. What we are looking though at is, is depression. We, we look at anxiety. We look at some behavioral pieces on that. So you can say. There are markers, right, for it at a, at a genetic level. So you can certainly say these are children at a higher risk. And, and also depending on what's going on in the, the environment, they may, that may increase the risk, right? Lots of, lots of people are raised beautifully and have no options because of just sort of their biological destiny. And so that's just a navigation sort of we all do, but no, we're not seeing bipolar. But what, who isn't bipolar at four? Right? And I'm not to make that, not to make light of that, but just, you know, that, that requires more time and a, and a better understanding of what's going on to diagnose.
We have a question. I'm not sure if it's for Pete or Sandy from Rita. It says, thanks for the very interesting presentations, a wonderful programs for the very young and for adults. And she wonders if there are programs for everyone in between.
Talking about our friendly neighborhood teenagers. And school-age kids, I, you know, I, I'll be the first to say, I'm sure Pete would agree with me that there aren't enough programs. They're out there. You know, insurance dictates kind of what you get to do frequently, but there are structured programs. For school-age kids and teenagers. I feel like the school system is getting so much better about recognizing. You know, youth mental health needs. So there are services that are available for, you know, students to access. And then as kids qualify for things through testing and that type of thing, more doors open up. There's not enough, though. There's, you know, Putnam Clubhouse, the clubhouse model is designed for adults. Because it is, you know, vocational rehab. Some people are exploring kind of a, like a transitional age clubhouse model so that. You know, teenagers would also have a safe place to go to just one hundred percent be themselves and have that kind of support. But. You know, there, there's not, I, there are specific day treatment programs and kind of short-term programs and residential programs. You know, there's different things that kids can access, but in my opinion, I feel like. Those kids have to, you know, be labeled a certain way in order to access those services and, and kind of just. You know, your ordinary teenager who maybe wants to process some feelings, there's, there's less available to them.
Yeah, and, and echoing what Sandy's saying, but it's, it's also interesting from a funding standpoint in terms of public monies. Both Sandy and I are sort of on the outsides of where that goes, because a lot, a lot of money does go in that whether or not there are enough services and whether their folks are identified well. Early childhood and, and older adults and, and even just anyone over eighteen. The counties tend to be less, less funding available for that. So. It's all, none of this is funded at the level it should be, particularly when you consider how much money is out there and, and the ways it's being distributed in our communities. This is why, again, it's just nice to be here with people who sort of care about the same thing.
We have another question from Julia Olson. She wondered.
Oh.
Hi, I just wanted.
You can speak herself.
Maybe Sandy could talk a little bit about the early intervention programs that we have for. I want to say teenage, might even be. Late, maybe like tweens or I forget Sandy, the, is it Fresh Start, Fresh Hope? I forget the name.
First Hope. So Julia and I used to work together at John Muir Behavioral Health. She's still there. She's the director of quality. I learned a lot working there, fifteen years as a social worker on. You know, child adolescent units and then the adult inpatient units. And yeah, so what Julie's referring to, thank you for the reminder, is that there is more attention being paid. To early intervention for psychosis, kind of along the same vein that Pete's talking about, kind of the sooner you provide support. The better the outcome will be versus somebody who. You know, whose psychosis continues and continues, and then their brain is changing, and that's not in a good way. So there is county funding for early intervention. Again, people have to meet certain criteria, but if, you know, families or a provider are recognizing that. Child, I think from twelve and up in our county. But there's programs in San Francisco and Alameda County as well. If there's suspicion of psychosis, you know, these families can get involved in a program where there is a psychiatrist monitoring. There's a lot of special. Family work that's happening and lots and lots of support and education. Because like Pete keeps referencing, that education is so important, right? Not just about helping people not feel ashamed, but also understanding to not punish. You know, to not push, push this young person away even more. And to kind of help the whole family. Feel supported because it's a struggle for the parents and grandparents as well. There's a lot of loss that happens, I think, when, when a big label or a big diagnosis is being thrown around. So kind of the more support, the better for that family system to, to stay intact, because that's the best thing for the person that's receiving treatment.
I had a question. Do you have other locations other than Contra Costa? Sandy, for Sandy.
Sorry, um, currently we're in Concord. The Putnam Clubhouse is in Concord. We were the first clubhouse to open in Northern California. There is, we, there are two, can we call them our sisters? There's two other clubhouses in Northern California. Unfortunately, there's aren't enough, but there's one in Marin County. There's one in San Carlos. Southern California has more. But Clubhouse International is the agency that accredits clubhouses, and currently there are over three hundred and thirty clubhouses. John, correct me if I'm wrong about this, in thirty-plus countries around the world.
Wow. Thank you so much. And, and so looking at clubhouseinternational.com or something is a way to find.
Yes.
I have a family member up in, say, Portland, Oregon area that could definitely use some help.
There is a clubhouse up there.
Okay.
In fact, two of our. Our members who are considered faculty members, meaning they've gone through extensive training to be able to accredit other clubhouses. They're actually scheduled to go up in May to do an accreditation there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. The clubhouse model is evidence-based. So when you visit the Clubhouse International website, you'll see lots of research. You know, really, really demonstrating the positive outcomes that come from. Programs like ours in terms of decreasing further psychiatric hospitalizations, decreasing homelessness and decreasing incarceration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Since you asked, I, I'm, I'm just looking into my records. In the last two weeks, I, I sat through a webinar by some mental health experts at the national level. And I was surprised to hear them say that the trend that they see going forward with mental health is the same kind of pattern. That is in healthcare, which is involve the community in somehow. And that the more they try to get the community involved, the, you know, better, the results go up and the costs go down. I will find this and send it to you all if you will, are interested because it's, it was, you know, I've got the recording somewhere in my records. It was quite surprising because they, they were talking as career mental health professionals at the national level. So.
Yeah, there was, there's been a reckoning, right? I mean, we all realize and, and I'm old enough to have been trained in the sort of, I'm healthy, you're not healthy approach of dealing with folks with mental illness. And so it's, it's been one, great that they no longer teach that way. And, and two, that even the folks that were trained that way are recognizing it's just not, it's not tenable anymore, right? It's, 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 it not only doesn't work as well to sort of take that older model. But frankly, it's just sort of morally wrong. So thanks for that, Brian.
Sure. I'll follow up and send it to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, if there's no more questions, then I want to thank Pete and Erica and Sandy and John for joining us tonight. As I said, the recording will be on the website later tonight. So if you want to go back and revisit or, you know, rehear something that was shared. You can do that. Please join us next week, next Wednesday. It will, the evening will be hosted by the social justice committee. And our topic will be building awareness on racial issues in La Mirinda. Yes, you heard me say it, La Mirinda, racial issues. It is happening in our own community. The goal is to open our hearts and minds to racial issues and how we can create the welcoming and inclusive La Mirinda community. So I hope you can join us next week, invite somebody to come along, bring a guest. Personally, invitation is always the best PR. So thank you again for joining us tonight. Have a lovely rest of the evening and see you later.
Thank you for having us.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.